Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Sustainable Development Panel Meeting for November. First of all, Jackie, do we have apologies, please?
Chair, we've had apologies from councillor Davis.
Okay, I understand she's not very well, so we'll take those declarations of interest. Are there any declarations of interest? No? Okay, let's move on to the minutes of the last meeting, which was fourteenth of September. So can we correct, accept these as a correct record of the meeting, please? Yep, people are putting their, they're raising their hands, so that's okay. Now, the minutes of the ninth. I think.
Chair, I've circulated those to you in draft form to inform your discussion tomorrow at Cabinet, but as members haven't had an opportunity to read those, I've just circulated them.
I was about to say I'd seen them, but very recently, and I wasn't sure, yeah, what the position was with them. Only I've got them, no one else has got them.
I have sent them to all members, but what I suggest, what I suggest is that we, they're subject to approval at the next meeting, but they'll inform discussion tomorrow. Okay?
Okay, that's fine. Thank you very much. Thank you. Very, very helpful. Tomorrow being Cabinet, of course. Let's move on then to write the local development scheme, so the November twenty twenty-one revised LDS. And I believe this is going to be, is this going to be you, Judith?
No, it's actually going to be presented by Charlotte.
Sorry, Charlotte, I wasn't clear who was going to do that. And there you are, resplendent with your new married name.
Great, thank you, Chair. And right, so the purpose of this report is to consider the draft revised local development scheme and to agree it and recommend that Cabinet approves it for publication. So the local development scheme is the work programme for producing key planning documents, which will form part of the local plan for Norwich. And the revised LDS is attached at appendix one, and it is intended to cover a two-year period up to twenty twenty-three. And so the LDS was last updated in February this year and was originally intended to cover the period to twenty twenty-three. But since then, progress has been made on various different work streams. We've got new work streams. You know, there's been updates, you know, particularly around things like East Norwich and the Greater Norwich Local Plan. So we have revised the LDS with the most up-to-date information that we have. I'll go through a summary of the main changes to the document. But other than that, the document is largely the same as the February version. So first of all, just to say that we haven't had any further information regarding the government's consultation on the planning white paper and changes to the current planning system documents. And this has obviously impacted in the review and production of several planned documents, advice and guidance. So I will cover that where it's relevant as we go through. We have now updated the LDS, the February version stated that the statement of community involvement would be reviewed during twenty twenty-one. It's still our intention to review the SCI over the coming months, but we've just had to build in a bit of flexibility on the wording of that, just to account for our workload at the moment. Since the last version of the LDS was published, a community group has expressed an interest in establishing a neighbourhood forum for the neighbourhood area that was designated in two thousand and eighteen. So we've had no formal application yet, but it's likely that we will have a formal application during the lifetime of this LDS. And we've just updated reference to the latest version of the Greater Norwich Annual Metre Report. Reference has been included to the progress and updated timescales associated with the Greater Norwich Local Plan. So as you probably know, the plan was submitted to the Planning Inspectorate in July this year, and it's anticipated that public examination will commence in early twenty twenty-two, and adoption expected by September next year. So we've just changed all our references to account for that in the LDS. In the February LDS, it outlined that a full review of the development management policies plan was not appropriate at that time, given the uncertainty around the changes to the planning system. As I said before, we've still had no further updates on the extent of those changes and when that might happen. However, it's the intention to consider commencing a review of the DM policies plan next year, particularly once we have greater clarity on what's happening with the Greater Norwich Local Plan. We've updated reference to the latest version of the Norfolk Strategic Planning Framework in the new document as well. We've included reference to the progress made on the East Norwich Master Plan. Just to update what's happened already with stage one and timescales, we're moving on to stage two. We originally, in February twenty twenty-one version, we included reference to the production of a Norfolk-wide local housing needs assessment, which was going to be led by Norwich City Council. And that hasn't happened on a Norfolk-wide scale because a Greater Norwich Local Housing Needs Assessment was produced as evidence to support the GNLP instead. The LDS has been updated to include details of progress made on production of an Article Four direction to remove permitted development rights for the conversion of offices to residential. And we've included the timescales in there that if everything proceeds as envisaged, it should be confirmed in December this year and come into force in July next year. But I think you're considering that as a different item on this agenda anyway. And following recent retail monitoring, more frequent monitoring of the city centre retail areas being considered to ensure that the council have more regular information on our retail sector. And again, I think that's being discussed under the next item on the agenda. So just to sort of summarise the main sort of challenges and risks for achieving what we've set out in the LDS and in the timeframe as well. These are largely the uncertainty around national policy changes, the availability of resources, both staff and financial, timescales around local plan production, including both the Greater Norwich Local Plan and a potential neighbourhood plan, and continued joint working with other authorities across Norfolk. Excuse me. Just a point to note that there's lots of aspects of the planning policies team's workload that is not included in the LDS, such as implementing our current local plan and monitoring of the local plan as well, which takes up quite a significant staff resource. And at any point, new planning priorities may arise, and they might impact upon the achievement of what we set out in the LDS and in the timeframes as well. But should any of this change and priorities change, then we would report this to Sustainable Development Panel as required and revise and update the LDS as appropriate. So as, as I said at the start, the recommendation is to agree the this revised version of the LDS and recommend that Cabinet approves it for publication as required by the planning and compulsory purchaser. So if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Charlotte, and a very good, clear report. So thank you for your work on that. Just, just one thing, just to pull out the, the uncertainty around the proposed changes to the planning system under the previous minister. They're on hold now that Michael Gove has taken over the reins and he's apparently listening. So we don't know how that, how long that'll go on for. And of course, we do know there was a lot of disquiet on the Tory back benches and in the Tory shires. I'm not asking you to comment on the politics of that, of course, but there was disquiet within the party of government over that. So perhaps, perhaps there'll be some change or some watering down. But I guess it's the uncertainty which is the biggest issue, which I think is what you highlighted is the biggest problem for us at the moment, because we don't know what powers we're going to have in the future. Is that fair?
Yes, I think so, that we don't know when changes might come into play or the extent of those and whether what was consulted on originally is going to be what is implemented or if it's going to be something different. So it does have an impact on what our work programme would be like. There are certain things that we know that we can progress with anyway. But it's just something that we have to be mindful of and keep under review.
And the other thing I just wanted to, thank you for that, I wanted to just to draw out, because people might be wondering, the neighbourhood forum for the area of the city, which actually, last time when we we refused, and it sort of explains why we refused the original application, it wasn't for in part for a coherent area of the city and the boundaries were not coherent and rational either, a whole range of reasons, and the committee was unrepresentative of the whole area. But we advised them what would be a coherent area, and they've come back actually with that as a proposal. Now, my understanding of the timescale for achieving that, in other words, the process they have to go through, particularly given that we've not received an application yet, although there is something in the media today, there is something in the evening news, I saw today about it. But the timescale is such that for planning developments in that area, so for example, big planning developments in that area, which are going to come forward, and we're expecting to come forward very soon, that process is likely to be completed before the neighbourhood forum is able to to be established and take on the powers that it would have. So I think just in terms of people understanding that, and clearly, you know, the elephant in the room is Anglia Square, just so that people understand that actually that process in terms of planning, the planning process that the city council will manage will be completed before the neighbourhood forum comes into being.
Plan, so creating and adopting a neighbourhood plan is obviously a fairly meaty task, but establishing a neighbourhood forum is something that we are like, you know, if they need to submit an application to us to say what area they'd like to apply for and show that they have a representative membership of the area. That's something that's likely to come forward relatively soon, I would imagine. But producing a neighbourhood plan is over a longer timescale.
Yeah, much longer timescale. And of course, they can't do it retrospectively. So, yeah, the plan can't be retrospective. So just so that we're clear about that, because I think that's really important that people understand that. So those are the only points I wanted to, well, yeah, I think those are the only points I really wanted to draw out, except just to say that I think some excellent work has been done. And I'm sure we can draw that out, but it's an excellent work has been done in terms of the updates that you talked about. And obviously, thanks again to officers for that. So I saw Adam put his hand up.
Thanks, Chair, and thanks, Charlotte, for the report. Just focusing on the progress made since the last LDS, I wondered if you could comment a bit further on the value the Brownfield Register provides to us as a council. Thanks.
And perhaps I can ask Joy if she could provide some information, because she actually looks after the Brownfield Register.
Thanks. Apologies, Charlotte.
Brownfield Register is something that we just have to do. I don't know how beneficial it's actually to the council, but it's something you have to produce over a year. It gets published on our website. So I guess it's there for anybody that wants to be able to see it. But yeah, I don't know if Judith has any knowledge about that.
I could add something if you want, although there's a dog howling in the background. I mean, what it does is, right, so what it does is it, for anyone who wants to look and for our own reference, it gives a comprehensive list of those brownfield sites which have got residential, which is suitable for residential development. And of course, that's a high priority for the council. We want to see more, there is a housing shortage, we want to see more residential house building in the city, and we want to see the use of brownfield sites maximised. So I mean, it's, in that sense, it's an important tool, particularly for potential developers, so that they can see, they can see where we would welcome and where we would want to see such development take place. So that's, yeah, that's my take on it.
Chair, might I add something?
Sarah, please do.
Thank you very much. And yeah, as the officers have said, obviously, we have a legal obligation to publish our Brownfield London Register. And we also, through the Transforming Cities Fund, now have what we're calling our revolving fund. And we're currently prioritising some of the sites on this list to see where we can make positive interventions as a council to effectively release some of them for development and to bring forward housing schemes in the city. So we've recently had some successful examples of this, the King's Head, I believe it is, where we've managed to purchase the site and we're actually kind of building social housing on that site now. So the intention is that we are looking very positively at how we can make positive interventions to some of the sites on this list to bring forward housing and other development in the city. So hope that adds something. Thank you.
And thanks, Sarah. And indeed, there were, in terms of potential CPOs, there were four brownfield sites, brownfield sites identified that we were pursuing. Mile Cross was the first one, but there were others, and we were assessing them in terms of what was likely to be successful. I'm not sure that the list is in the public domain, but we have done some work around, some time ago, around where we thought, where brownfield sites weren't being brought forward, sites on the list, and where we thought a CPO would help them to come forward. And as you say, Mile Cross is the first, but we don't intend it to be the last. So does that answer the question, Adam? Yeah, brilliant. Anybody else? Denise?
Thanks, Mike and Charlotte. Yes, we now need to see everything through the prism of the climate change emergency. But the LDS document content largely are business as usual. For example, the Strategic Planning Framework is a very long list of road schemes. And the GNLP has, for example, adequate energy standards for new homes. So I wanted to ask, please, through the LDS work programme, what the local planning authorities are doing to, or going to do to halve carbon emissions from the built environment and transport by twenty thirty, please?
Good luck to you. Charlotte?
Sorry about that, sorry. I was just going to say that the in terms of the documents that we have set out, the LDS itself is setting out the different documents that are going, they're in the work, it is the work programme as such, rather than the contents of those documents. I don't know if somebody who has more oversight, perhaps Sarah or Judith, on what all the different documents are, what we're working on in terms of the climate change agenda?
Yeah, thank you, Charlotte. I'll try and add to a couple of those points. So in terms of the Greater Norwich Local Plan, obviously, that's been submitted for its public examination. And we're likely to get the inspectors' first matters, issues and questions in the next few weeks, which obviously will determine the areas that the inspectorate wish to kind of look at in more detail in terms of the adoption of that plan. So I would expect there will be some discussions about the ambitions of the Greater Norwich Local Plan to be had in that examination process. And you will see in the work programme, I think it's on page thirty-eight of your agenda, that we are kind of, and also in the report itself, we're going to commence a review of our local development management policies in the new year. And we are very aware that there is a kind of a changing legislative environment and obviously the need to respond to climate change. And we're also working closely with colleagues on the new environmental strategy and the biodiversity strategy that's being developed for the council. But review of our local development management policies will also look to kind of build in, you know, reaching for some of these kind of climate change aspirations as well. So I hope that answers the question.
Yes.
Did you want to come back, Denise? You're on mute. I think you just muted yourself.
It's myself, yeah. Yes, the LDS is going to be very important, but whole of the last, well, six years, we've been stymied on the planning committee about introducing, having further tougher environmental standards in relation to, well, homes and energy and so on. Because of the, because of the joint call strategy, it's acted like a straitjacket. And so I'm very concerned that the GNLP is very weak on homes and energy standards, and that we're going to have the same things for the following decade, notwithstanding the LDS. So it's really essential that we get the GNLP right. And I'm really concerned that it isn't at the moment. It's really quite weak on homes' energy standards, for example.
Yeah, thank you for that. And absolutely take your point. It's also important that in our kind of planning development framework, that we don't replicate legislation that is covered elsewhere. And so obviously, a lot of kind of homes' energy standards is covered in the building regulations. And as I say, the Greater Norwich Local Plan will be tested on its energy ambitions through the examination in public due to commence early next year, hopefully.
Yeah. Can I just make a further point then, Mike? Yeah. But the building standard regulations are really not that stringent. And the government has said that local authorities can bring in more rigorous standards. So I think the building standards are currently energy efficiency rating C. And really, we ought to be aspiring to energy efficiency rating A. And we could do that through the GNLP, but it doesn't get anywhere near rating A, unfortunately.
I think the Greater Norwich Local Plan is a much more strategic plan, and it might be that our review of our development management policies does seek to achieve that A rating for home energy. But that will come when we start to review those local plan policies. It's probably too much detail for the GNLP, but, you know, we can certainly look at that when we review our more localised development management policies, which we are committed to doing in the early part of the year.
That would be good, but the GNLP is very, very weak on on-site renewable energy, for example. It's gone up from something like ten percent to thirty percent, and it really ought to be much higher.
Okay, so I think, I think we can note, and obviously, we're looking at the LDS today, but we're happy to listen to the comments you've got to make about the overall planning process. And I think that those are issues, they're very valid points to make, Denise. Probably this debate at this meeting today isn't the place where we're going to be able to take them forward. Because as I say, you know, we're talking about the LDS, but I think what we can do is you can note a minute your concerns and make sure that the, that, well, I'm aware of them and make sure that the city council representatives on the appropriate bodies, joint bodies, are aware of them as well and can challenge if necessary.
Thank you.
Helpful?
Yep, thank you very much.
Lesley?
Thank you. I was going to ask a related question about how the LDS helps us keep on top of the flood risk, which is continually increasing with every new estimate about temperature rising. So I think we need to put those, you know, we need to keep tracking the risk and make sure it goes on the risk register and any other document where it's relevant. So I'm happy that we're going to be reviewing some things more often. And I think my other points about reviewing probably fall under the next item about retail.
Okay, thank you, Lesley. So the LDS and flood risk and flood risk management. Who would like to comment on that?
Well, I think I could just say that, you know, as Charlotte said earlier, this is a work programme of, it's not developed for this particular purpose. I think maybe this has more to do with monitoring of flood risk through the AMR. But this purpose of the LDS is really to set out our plans for production of local plan documents. But certainly, it's something we need to ensure is monitored and is monitored as we go forward.
So what I mean, what you're saying, Judith, is you wouldn't expect the LDS to be explicit around around flood risk, or might there be a work stream, an LDS work stream? Is that potentially something that there could be?
Well, I think in a way that.
That would happen elsewhere.
Sorry, it just focuses on the main planning documents, like the Greater Norwich Local Plan and any SPDs and so on. So, you know, and I think some, there may be related work will come out of the review of the Development Management Policies Plan as well, as Sarah mentioned earlier. So we're really talking about this, this document really updates us on documents that are being produced. So it's something we'll bear in mind if there's any sort of opportunity for us to look at this in a planning document. So as we move forward, I think that's something that will come out of the Development Management Policies review work.
And that would be reflected in a future report?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, just to say that we review the LDS quite frequently, really, just to make sure that they're as up to date as they can be. The last one was something like February of this year, so it's not been very long since the last document. So no doubt, we will be doing another review next year, especially when we have to incorporate or reflect changes to the national planning policy and see what comes out of the white paper, as we were discussing earlier. So I don't think it'll probably be awfully long until we have another review.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course, this report is kind of passively reflecting the work that's being done and updating, rather than being the place which initiates such work. So, but the point you make is very fair. We're all concerned about flood risk, Lesley, and we need to keep it on the agenda. So any other? I mean, if not, I'd, oh, all right.
Kate has her hand up.
Kate has her hand up, so I'll hold on to mine. Go on, Kate.
Sorry, Mike. Yeah, I was just scrolling back and forth. I've got no light in my house. I can't read my paper copy, unfortunately. So I was looking online just to see if we could have a bit more information about UEA and the need for more student housing, seeing as the university has plans to grow and just, yeah, how that's been affected by remote learning as well. Is there any of that detail in there? Sorry, I've just been scrolling up and down, trying to remind myself.
There isn't any specific detail about that as such in the LDS, as Mike's just said, this is just setting out our work programme. But just to reassure you that both Judith and I, we attend a working group with representatives from both the universities in Norwich, where we discuss the need for student accommodation issues around management, et cetera. And that's something that's come off the back of the Purpose Built Student Accommodation Guidance and Advice Note. So again, that's not a specific piece of work that is referred to in the LDS. It's not a document that we're producing as such, but it is work that is ongoing in the background that we both, we both attend that group. And if there's anything in particular that you wanted to ask about that, yeah, we'd be happy to help.
Excellent, thank you. Would ask now or at a later date directly? I suppose my concern with student accommodation is some sort of two aspects, really. One, that they're sufficient for students, and one that students are supported. You know, if they've come to a new area, for example, and also the effects on neighbourhoods of HMOs, which it seems to me that dedicated student accommodation can mitigate against that.
If I can just come in there, obviously, for those of you who were at full council a few weeks ago, we obviously had a petition presented from some residents of an area who feel they're being particularly affected by HMOs in their area. And at that full council, in our response to that petition, we did commit to updating the evidence base on houses of multiple occupation across the whole city. So we're aware that this particular neighbourhood is feeling some pressures, but we also need to investigate this across the whole city. As part of that, we're also committed to updating our Purpose Built Student Accommodation document to kind of check the help that that form of accommodation is offering students. And, you know, because students are, you know, this is a very vibrant university city, effectively, and we need to support them and provide the right accommodation. And so it's really important that our first step in that whole process is assessing the baseline evidence of what we've got in terms of HMOs and how they feed into student accommodation and purpose-built student accommodation as well. And thereafter, we can, we can look at how we can kind of regulate that sector and drive up housing standards. And that's probably an alternative part of my service, rather than the planning side of things possibly. But that kind of baseline evidence is going to be investigated as soon as possible.
Fantastic. Thank you for your reminder.
Yeah, I mean, the work on purpose-built student accommodation, really important, included the need to baseline. including the needs, baseline needs assessment as well. But also, as you say, looking at the impact of H M Os. And of course, it's not only students who live in H M Os, but but the impact of the presence of H M Os across the city. And there are a couple of areas where, a couple of wards where we hear a lot of representations about it, but of course, they're not the only wards where it's an issue. So as you say, we do need to take a citywide approach, but clearly encouraging U E A to continue to to work with them, particularly around their plans to continue building accommodation on campus. That's that's welcome, but also purpose-built student accommodation seems to me ensures that we look at the location that it's in, but we also look at the quality of it and also the management of it, which, again, in terms of living with the neighbours is really important in terms of how they're managed. So I think that's a really important piece of work, and I know that it impacts on the quality of life of a lot of people in the city, not least the students themselves. So I think it's really, really, really important piece of work that we've done. Are there any other, any other questions or comments on this? So we are being asked to agree this, to recommend to Cabinet that they approve this. Are we happy to do that? Brilliant, thank you, everybody. Let's move on to the Norwich City Centre Shopping and Town Centre Floor Space Monitor and Local District Centre Monitor. This is a really interesting document. So who's going to lead off on this, please?
That's me, Chair.
Hi, Joy.
Hi, thank you. And yeah, so the the most recent survey was carried out to the city centre and the local district centres in July this year. And the the report presents the findings of that survey. So the the last retail monitor before that was done in October 2019. And obviously, things have changed significantly in that time, largely as a result of the impact of the Covid pandemic. So previously, the report focused solely on retail uses. However, for the first time, this report also looks at vacancies for town centre uses as a whole. Because in recent years, there's been a general acceptance by both national government and through the G N L P, that high streets do need to evolve in order for them to thrive. So in terms of the findings, there's a lot there, and I'm not going to go through all of them now. They're set out in the report and summarised in the covering note. But overall, I don't think things are as bad as they could have been, especially given that we've had three lockdowns when all shops and leisure facilities have been forced to close other than central retail, and footfall has been significantly down within these periods. So for the city centre as a whole, we've had an increase in vacant floor space from 5.5% to 14.5%. And in terms of units, there's been an increase from 10.1% to 14.1%. So although there is quite a quite a large increase there, it does still compare favourably to the national vacancy rates of 15.8%. So when we take into account all town centre uses, the vacancy rates for Norwich City Centre increase by around 1%. So in terms of the total retail floor space, this has decreased by 0.7% since 2019. But the rate at which it is decreasing has slowed. So between June 2018 and October 2019, retail actually decreased by 2.8%, which was largely a result of changes that happened in the Castle Quarter. So as I say, that's kind of slowed quite significantly since the last the last monitoring report. So one of the most noticeable things is that we've seen a large number of national chains lost from the city centre. However, on a more positive note, independents have performed much better and have appeared to be a lot more resilient. So very briefly, I'm just going to look at all of, look at the different areas. So we've got the primary retail area, where there's been a significant increase in vacant floor space. And this has increased from 4.1% to 14.5%. That that's largely down to some of the units with large floor space, such as Debenhams and Topshop, becoming vacant over the monitoring period. So in terms of the secondary retail area, vacancy rates now stand at 23.1%, which is the highest in the city. However, if we omit the former Toys R Us unit and Outfit, then the vacancy rates fall to only 6.7%, which is the lowest in the city centre. So therefore, the high vacancy rate can be attributed to the Cathedral Retail Park, which in itself has a vacant floor space figure of 72%. So in terms of the large district centres, so this is an increase from 3.3% to 9.1%. However, the high vacancy rate, again, is a result of the retail park. So this this is Riverside Retail Park, which has a vacancy rate of 13.7%, where you compare that to the Magdalene Street, Anglia Square area, where the vacancy rate is only 7%. So again, it's highlighting the importance and resilience of our independent retailers. So in terms of the rest of the centre, this has increased from 5.9% to 13.7%. To historically, this area has a higher rate of vacancies. So, for example, in 2014, it was 18.3%. So not really concerned about the the increase in vacancy rates there. Just a point to note, there is a mistake that needs correcting in the final final version of this, which is on page 90 of the report, which concerns the rest of the centre. And I incorrectly put that the number of units doubled from 22 units to 25, when in fact, that should have been 12 units to 25. So I just need to make that correction in the final version before it's published. And so moving on to the district and local centres. So the vacancy rates here are lower than in the city centre. So district centres have a vacancy rate of 9.8%, which is very similar to what it was in 2019. And the local centres have seen an increase in vacancy rates from 7.1 to 12.7. And so although there has been that increase, several of our neighbourhood centres have no empty units at all. And overall, the centres appear relatively robust and may well have been supported by more people shopping locally, especially during the lockdowns. So the past 18 months have been extremely challenging, as Covid has accelerated trends that were already occurring, with more people, for example, shopping online. Unfortunately, there's been a closure of lots of businesses, but it's encouraging that footfall has significantly increased following the lifting of restrictions. And there's also, is a lot of investment happening in Norwich, both in terms of new shops coming in. And but there's also been a lot happening in terms of public realm improvements, which will hopefully encourage more people to spend time in the city. So I don't think we're out the woods yet. I think we're going to see the impact of Covid for a while, particularly as government support, such as business rates release, comes to an end. We've also got the additional challenges of the loss of control that's been brought about by government changes to the use class order and the general permitted development order. So with any Class E units now being able to change to residential without being able to consider the impact on the town centre, we're concerned that there could be the peaceful loss of town centre uses, which could result in kind of residential interspersed with town centre uses in the city centre. And in our view, this could be a threat to the vitality and vibrancy of our high streets. So it's going to be very important to monitor changes over the coming years in terms of that specifically. So overall, however, despite a reduction in retail floor space and an increase in vacancy rates, given the circumstances, Norwich has demonstrated that it remains relatively robust, and it still can be considered a thriving retail centre in the east of England. So as well as noting these findings, the recommendation is also to consider possible implications, especially in terms of the development plan policies, which we'll be looking at reviewing in the future. And so we now acknowledge that there's a greater need for flexibility to allow our high streets to evolve in order for them to thrive. And as well as being set out in government policy, this is also the approach that's been taken within the Emerging Greater Norwich Local Plan. So but we need to kind of consider whether our town centre policies and the Development Management Policies Plan are still fit for purpose or whether, you know, a review of these is needed. Just a few examples of things that we might need to question, whether it's still appropriate to have thresholds for the primary and secondary retail area, given the introduction of Class E. And we might want to consider whether we want to with to redraw some of the boundaries of our retail areas. So, for example, should the Cathedral Retail Park be repurposed for other uses? So the Averson Young report that was done for the G N L P sets out that there's an oversupply of comparison goods retail and that some units, possibly such as those with large floor spaces, secondary retail areas, could be repurposed to other town centre uses or to uses that are compatible in a town centre environment. And we all, there could also be some implications in terms of Anglia Square. And there's obviously less retail now being proposed there than there was previously, and no sites have been reserved for retail in the emerging G N L P. I think the the findings of this monitoring report would support those approaches. Now, we might also want to question whether there might be a need for an Article Four direction in the future to prevent shops from being converted to residential. I think we're going to have to kind of monitor the situation, wait and see over the next couple of years, so we can build up an evidence base. But that's just something that perhaps we need to kind of think about. So one of the other main things to notice, the importance of monitoring change. And therefore, it's proposed that we start to do this a bit more frequently. So doing another survey in spring next year will help us understand what the longer term impacts of Covid has been and will also help us see what the what impacts the introduction of Class E and allowing commercial premises to residential without the need for planning permission and kind of what implications that will have on our high street. So whilst, you know, we haven't got necessarily the resources to undertake a full review of our D M policies at this point in time, you know, it's something that we are going to be doing in the future, especially once the G N L P public examination is over. So the the more frequent monitoring of of the retail situation will help us to consider the direction of travel for our town centres and our retail policies and will will assist us when considering the policy of response and whether which policies actually need reviewing. And so there's kind of a lot of information there, and there's quite a lot to take in. But if there's any questions, I'm happy to take them.
A lot of information, but very well presented, good report. So thank you for your for your work on that. And I was quite concerned about what might be in this report following the pandemic. And it was, it was nowhere near as bad as I'd feared it might be. But still, we've got some big challenges. So I saw Marion first put a hand up, then I saw Lesley. Marion? Oh, Marion, you're on mute.
Can you hear me now?
Can do, yes.
Yeah.
Loudly there.
Yeah, just recently, what what evolved is leading to a lot of rumours and what's going round. We recently passed a planning application for a large hotel where the Tesco's in the centre of Norwich is. Now, we find that although Tesco's was going to be absorbed in that application, it's now going to close down. And there's rumours about where it's going to and what is happening to the city centre. And the wild and one, the one I heard was it's going into where Laura Ashley was. So there's all sorts of really odd situations. The same with the Cathedral Shopping Centre. That's supposed to be a block of flats. Now, there's a lot of information being passed round, none of which we have agreed, I don't think we've agreed to, and it's it's upsetting people. So if we do know anything about it, should we make it known?
I think a lot of it just isn't in the public domain yet. You know, it's kind of conversations that are happening before it goes in the press. So, yeah, as you say, my understanding is that Tesco's will be going somewhere else. But at the moment, I don't think it's in the public domain as to where that will be. And again, with the Cathedral Retail Park, there is a pre-app on that for that site at the moment, which, but again, because it's pre-app, it's not yet in the public domain. So, you know, there will be things that come forward in the future. And I'm sure, you know, us and yourselves will find out about things and have discussions at the time. You know, like something like Cathedral Retail Park, that's such a big site. And once pre-app discussions progress, I'd like to think that that's the kind of thing that might go to Planning Committee possibly as a pre-app. Or if not, at least when it comes to application time, you know, then that will be when we kind of discuss the implications of that in the in the public domain.
Yeah, thanks, Jo. I think it's important that members of Planning Committee understand that pre-app does take place, you know, in those discussions take place with officers to to assist the applicant prior to putting in their formal application. And that those are confidential discussions. It's a shame if things are leaking out and creating, and the rumour mill is 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 underway, because that 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 just confuses people. And again, I understand in terms of the Tesco Express, negotiations are underway around the the new location, and that's something clearly which is commercially confidential and not something that would be in the public domain at this point, but it will be. So there's nothing unusual happening, there's nothing that hasn't happened before. It's just clearly people are concerned about the city centre and and there's a lot of information circulating. But Marion, sorry, Marion, you've got your hand up.
I just to say, one of the reasons I'm asking about this, because I live in in that area. And I'm, it takes me about 10 minutes, longer to get anywhere, because people keep asking me. And when they say, I don't know, it's it not, nothing's been agreed yet. And and I get some very strange looks. So but I think I'm used to it by now. But there is a hell of a lot of talk about it. And it seems to be rumour mongering to to disadvantage the council. That's what I'm worried about.
Well, you know, it's up to Tesco where they choose to 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 go and where they choose to negotiate to go. And it's it's a matter for it's a matter for them. But but, you know, we've all been around long enough and read enough in the news and seen enough online comments to know that for some people, you know, whatever happens, it's the council's fault. The council's fault. So, you know, that's that's not new, is it? But unfortunately, hopefully, all will be revealed soon. Lesley?
Thank you. I think I think the rumour mill is what happens when people don't have enough reliable and timely information. So we should encourage Tesco's and anybody else to, you know, to get that, to make their information public, even if the pub, if the information is, we don't know yet. But what I have a few questions I wanted to ask, and one is about if we're reviewing retail more often, what kind of workload are we looking at? You know, what are we not going to do when we're reviewing retail? Another thing is, I don't think we should assume that we're out of the wood on the pandemic yet. So if we're, depending how often we're going to review retail, we might want to look a little bit further ahead to when the pandemic is a little bit further behind us. I also wonder how we can build on the positive trends that we're seeing, like people are wanting to shop locally, support their corner shops. People are also consuming differently, so buying less stuff, buying more experience. And we have a lot more of a repair economy than we used to have. And I'd really like, hope that we'll be building on that trend, because there are all sorts of people and planet reasons why we should be doing that. And I think it's a great opportunity, but I'm not quite sure how that fits into what we're doing here. But while we have, and two more questions about buildings. While while we have a 15% vacancy rate, what are we doing to make it easy for people to to use those empty buildings, whether it's the pop-up, one-offs or the new businesses? I mean, I read a little bit about Meanwhile leases, which I think are only available to charities at the moment. And I'm wondering if we have the option of making it, making them available to community groups that maybe haven't yet had time to get established as charities, because it's quite a complicated process to get registered as a charity. And there are a number of doors that aren't open to you until you've done that. So I'm wondering if we could open some of those doors for people who just want a space to do something. And my last question is about a big city centre venue, which which might might be the halls with 800 seats. But I'm wondering if a number of people from time to time have suggested that Anglia Square be a big concert venue. But what about Debenhams? What about other sites? Is it something that's kind of on our wishlist?
Yeah, there's quite a lot there. I'll try and make my way through it. So in terms of the workload of reviewing the the report, you know, it is quite resource intensive. So in terms of the workload of reviewing the the report, you know, it is quite resource intensive. And we've been quite fortunate in that some of our planning technicians have been able to go and do quite a lot of the survey work for us. And so we'd hope that we'd be able to kind of use some of them again to to actually go out and do do the surveys. Like, one of the things that actually took the most time was writing the full report that I did. So it might well be that if we're doing it more frequently, maybe kind of annually, you might write the full report. And every six months or how often, you only, you you do the surveys, analyse the data and produce some tables. And then at least that shows you the direction of travel without having to spend so much time on it. So and and the other thing is, it might be that kind of with the local district centres, you only do those annually as well because that's quite a large piece of work as well. So we'd have to kind of consider it and how best we can go about doing it. But obviously, it's an important piece of work. So I think it is something that we, you know, we we do need to be able to find the resources to do. And yeah, I agree, like, we're not out of the woods in terms of the pandemic. Like, we we did do an survey, but this this result has kind of two surveys in it. Because we did kind of do a quick one before as well and thought that it was best to leave it so we could see a little bit more about the impact of the pandemic. So maybe that ties in more with what I've said, kind of the next survey could be one that's just a lot a lot quicker without the full report. And then after that, we could do another one that then, you know, has a look at perhaps what the fuller impact of the pandemic has been. What was the other? So build on the positive, in terms of building on the positive trends. Can't exactly remember what your point was about.
I think it was about people's, people are appreciating their local shops and their independent businesses, perhaps more than before the pandemic.
Yeah. And I think quite a lot of the things might be with us working with the bid in terms because, you know, there's quite a lot of discussions going on in terms of the bid. So I think in terms of some of your other points, and it might be that we can kind of work more proactively with some other people like that and to look at how things can change and move forward a little bit and how they can perhaps assist with other businesses as well and what they what they want to. Sorry, I can't remember what all of the points were. I don't know if anybody else can assist in what we can do to make it easy for people to use vacant buildings. Is that something that Sarah, you know, going to think about?
Oh, I'd love to say yes. Unfortunately, I don't, I think it, I think it would be a great idea. But I'm not sure we've got the powers to be able to to do that, unfortunately. Obviously, the changes in permitted development rights to allow more flexibility of uses and flexibility of change between users. And but I think there would still be kind of lease lease negotiations with with kind of Londoners and building owners. Obviously, the business rights relief has been extended, I believe. I can't remember when that now comes to an end. But hopefully, that will also enable people to kind of open up temporary uses effectively. And but yeah, I mean, I think it's something we can, we can consider how we can be possibly more proactive about it. But that's probably not an answer I can give fully at this juncture.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Thank you. Leslie, I can see Adam has his hand up.
Thanks, Mike. What, well, thanks for the report, Joy. While it obviously presents a mixed picture, I think the key takeaway is is how resilient we've been compared to most other high streets. And I was speaking to some councillors the other day who'd come up to Norwich for shopping from other parts of the region, and they were astounded at how how strong our footfall and how and how how vibrant it still was in Norwich City Centre. So I think, you know, that is something we can be proud of in in the circumstances. I wondered if you could just set out a summary of the kinds of measures we've taken as an authority and in partnership with other agencies to to improve the diversity of the offer in Norwich City Centre, enable it to be more resilient to the kinds of shocks we've seen in the last couple of years. Thanks.
Well, I guess, you know, in terms of our policies, previously, we've had quite strict policies in terms of, you know, needing to have a certain proportion of retail retained. And I think we're becoming a bit more flexible on that. And I think there's a need to be more flexible on that. And, you know, somewhere like in the Castle, Castle Quarter, we've accepted a lot more kind of leisure uses. And I think that's what it's going to be about. It's people want to come into the city for their experience. And while they're in the city, they then might do a little bit of shopping as well. You know, we can't, the city can't often compete with the internet, so it's it's providing something different. And I did also mention kind of in terms of a lot of the public realm improvements that are happening in the city as well. So I think it's about creating an environment that people actually want to come into. They want to hang around for a little bit longer. And just, yes, spend a bit more time in the city and hopefully spend a bit more money in the city as well and support the retailers. And I think it's kind of also, again, just highlighting the importance of our independent retailers. And a lot of people, I think, kind of come to the city for that. And so it's, yeah, hoping, you know, supporting those. And but in terms of the kind of the use classes order, I think that will give a lot more flexibility for people to be able to open more quickly a new business. So I think there can be some kind of positives in terms of that. I think more in terms of what the concern is, is whether things are going to change to residential. And that's when you're going to lose your vitality within the city centre.
Thanks, Joy.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think we 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 have known for some time that that diversity of offer and creating an experience for people and places where people want to linger will increase footfall, but attract more people. And, you know, the the those different diverse offerings in the city centre are sort of mutually supporting in many ways and create a critical mass. And we've been able to do that in a way that many other places can't. And of course, we're lucky, we've got other things like our cultural offer as well to add into the mix. So it's actually understanding all of that and then having policies that reinforce it. So, you know, I completely agree with you, Joy. We 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 are fortunate, but in many ways, you make your own luck, don't you? And we've, we've looked at the position we're in and we've adopted policies and taken stances to protect the city centre and keep it vibrant. And I'm interested in what you say, Adam, about these these people from other parts of the country or the region that they that were up here shopping and clearly they they were impressed.
Yeah, I mean, I I shouldn't say the town where I'm from because it's not allowed to be mentioned. But I have to say, if you if you go into the centre of of that particular town now, it's as dead as a dodo and you can hear a pin drop. Really, a very sad state of affairs.
I lived there for a while. We're not giving the name away, but I lived there for a while and it was always really, really busy, really, really vibrant. No, I don't think it was ever quite as much as Norwich, but it wasn't far off. But that's really sad to hear. Okay, and it is a place that we tend to compare ourselves with. Anyway, let's not, let's go to Judith.
Yes, thank you, Joy, for that. Following on, you spoke about people coming to Norwich for the experiences that we have. I I do think that the people like the the churches of St Peter Mancroft and the cathedral worked incredibly hard this summer to get people through the doors, whether it be C to B to C Dippy, the dinosaur. That was a huge success. And also the Gaia, that's the St Peter Mancroft. So so it is those experiences that bring people into the city. And as you say, perhaps do some shopping as well. But also, it's a geographic, it's a unique geographic location for the east of England. And we don't have, well, we don't have cities nearby that rival our position. And in fact, you've just said, we take from other cities, people travel from Cambridge and I will say Ipswich to shop in Norwich and have the experiences because we have that sort of critical mass. And 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 while we benefit, I mean, there are, there are people, there are losers. That that, you know, you can't ignore that. But but we do have a sort of unique geographic position and we have had that for many years. And so we are, we started a good base and and, you know, hopefully, we can continue to to flourish and and have that vitality, vitality.
Vitality.
Vitality, vitality. But it does, it does come, you know, to some extent at the the expense of others. And and, you know, due to, in some part, to to those activities that are on offer in in the city. And certainly, the the cultural and historical activities are vital.
Yeah, I think that's that's a really good point. Yeah, I think, you know, things like the dinosaur trail this summer, you know, that brought in a phenomenal number of people. You know, so so, yeah, events like that, I think, are fundamental to the success of the city. And I think in terms of what you said about other cities as well, I think it's definitely worth noting that although we've lost a lot of multiples, we've lost a lot of our chains. There are some chains that have stayed in Norwich, whereas they've closed in a lot of other cities. That, you know, shows the importance of of the of the city. And I think, as you say, it's, you know, it's got, it's got such a large catchment and it's a unique geographical location. So that definitely helps that case.
I think also it's notable that there are some chains looking to come into Norwich. And and so actually, we're still getting, I mean, they're not going to replace the biggies like Debenhams and Topshop. You know, there's really big places in B H S that close necessarily, but we are still getting inward investment. It's interesting about, actually, I'm interested in the extent to which it is at the expense of 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 other other towns in the the region. I don't know how far people travel to come shopping in Norwich. But certainly, I lived in Ipswich for a while and driving to Norwich is a real pain up the A one forty. If I wanted to go somewhere else for shopping, it was a darn sight easier to drive to Thurrock, Thurrock, your carriage way all the way and took about an hour. I I really, I really don't know, but it's an interesting point you make, Judith. I wonder whether, you know, whether our success is at the expense of others. I really, really don't know. Be nice to know, actually, if there's any information about where, you know, what proportion of our shoppers come from where. Certainly from around Norfolk, because we're kind of on an island, aren't we? There's there's nowhere else, you know, you want to come shopping, you come to Norwich. But but when you get a little bit further away, I wonder how that dissipates. But I don't suppose anyone's got that information at their fingertips.
I don't know. It might be something that the bid might know a little bit more about. I don't know. Because that's the people that we get footfall figures from. So, yeah, it could be, it could be to do with that. But one of the things in terms of the footfall figures that's been quite noticeable this year is because they can split it up into people who regularly come into the city and people who are visitors and the regular has fallen. But the the number of visitors, so first time visitors to the city has increased considerably. And and I guess that's because of staycations and that kind of thing. So.
Football.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's a really good point, Joy. But, you know, this is not necessarily a typical period, obviously, that we're looking at. And we need to look at the next period and the one after in order to see what actually what is the long term, well, the medium term trend, if you like. And that that it would have been a time where a lot of people were coming, even though they live nearby, coming into the city less. I certainly did, even though I live in the city because of the pandemic, whereas there are other people who are actually taking staycations. And we're coming here. So it's kind of, I unbalanced it a bit and balanced it a bit. So again, probably too early to tell, but.
And it'll be the visitors that are spending more money in the city centre than those people that are just popping out to buy a sandwich at lunchtime. So, yeah.
Leslie's got her hand up. Leslie?
Just a quick related point about where you go shopping, that the importance of rail. So I would quite like to go shopping now and again in Kings Lynn or Fakenham or Wells. And you just can't get there if you don't have a car or a lot of time to play with. And presumably, people would come here from those places if they could.
I mean, it's interesting, Leslie, because these days, if you, the days when you could sort of go into a a shop in the city centre and buy something large, you know, white goods or something and stick them in the back of your car, it just doesn't work like that anymore. You don't, you know, you basically, you order it and then they they deliver it to you. So the idea that people need their car in order to go and do a shop for anything major, don't have to do it anymore. You know, but clothes shopping and other stuff you you could do and take back on the train. So I think you're absolutely, you're absolutely right. And and I enjoy train journeys. And it's actually a lot easier, less stressful to get places. Get to Ipswich is forty minutes on the train and you can relax, have a coffee, take it easy, have a sandwich on the train, you're there. Driving there takes heaven knows how long and it's a really stressful drive. So let's hear it from public transport. Denise, that's where you put your hand up.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. Yes, I wanted to ask a question really about transport. The the new section on retail warehouses and out of town shopping is is very helpful. It's short, but hopefully they'll, they'll have regular reports on on this aspect. Because well, out of town shopping has been a problem really for a long time with the increase in car use and impact on the city centre. So I know that the city council, in its response to the draft Transport for Norwich strategy, proposed a workplace parking charges. But I wondered what the council's view is on national road pricing generally, which would help to dampen down some of the non-essential car journeys and maybe create a fairer, more level playing field between, for example, out of town and and city centre retail. And depending on on your view, you can have different types of national road user pricing. And one that I think would be really good would be one based on on distance and time with maybe help for people who who are other, well, low income groups living in rural areas with some sort of credits for them. So I wondered whether the city council might be willing to write to the government and support, recommend road user pricing. Because this is the time when we should be doing that. If we move into electric vehicles, then the government's going to be losing fuel duty and going to have to look at something like road, road user charging. Thanks.
It's a good point. I'm afraid I don't know the answer. And I don't, yeah, I don't know much about the National Road User Pricing Scheme and that kind of thing. So I don't know if anybody else can can assist.
It's not something formally that we've looked at, actually, Denise. But I absolutely take your point about not just out of town shopping, but out of town working, you know, business parks as well. All these places which are dependent on car journeys and the private car, which sprung up sort of from the eighties and nineties onwards. And it seems that maybe was their time, but this doesn't seem like their time when we're trying to reduce car usage. So I mean, certainly, if it's something you would like to talk about further, I'd be more than happy to to read anything you've got about it. Because as I say, it's not something we've discussed or something that I'm particularly knowledgeable on. Is that okay?
Thanks, Mike. I was going to ask whether we're taking any steps or whether we've got any thoughts about what actions we can take to make the Riverside Retail Park less car dependent and more accessible to people on on foot, bicycle, bus, et cetera.
Yeah, well, that's always been a bit of an issue with the Riverside Retail Park. Like, there's the the development at St Anne's Wharf isn't there. And I think hopefully the links will be improved between the city centre and the retail park as a result of that. And but I don't know, in my in my mind, you know, it's a difficult one because the Riverside Retail Park is very much an out of town retail park that just happens to be close to the city centre. And so, yeah, I think we can, we can go go some way in doing it by, you know, improving those links. Like, we're hopefully going to be doing with this Anne's Wharf development. But I don't know, in my view, you're never going to stop people from driving there. So, yeah, it might be something that we do, we want to kind of consider as possibly as part of the D M and policies plan review, you know, that's a very good point to raise. And it's just whether there's anything else that we can do through that through that review that we might be able to kind of to improve the connectivity to it. But, yeah, it's a good, very good point.
Yeah, because it also, it kind of sits between the city centre and East Norwich as well. So, you know, it's it's an interesting location and perhaps an increasingly important location, just thinking about people living in the new East Norwich area, sort of the route they might take walking into the city. You know, they're they're going to go very close to that retail park. So that's interesting. But also, the point was made earlier on about whether or not we want to sort of reduce the size of the area which is approved for city centre uses because, retail uses. Because if there's going to be less retail, therefore less critical mass for retail. approved for city centre uses because, retail uses, because if there's going to be less retail, therefore less critical mass for retail, you don't want it too spread out. So, you know, you gave the example of the Cathedral Retail Park. It's spreading it out too much. And so that's something I think we need to think of as we go forward. It's the critical mass of the city centre. So Lesley, again.
Thank you. I think Adam raised a really interesting point about the Riverside Retail Park. I mean, the most interesting thing about it is, for me, is the swimming pool. But also, there is already a really nice walk from the station to the Riverside Retail Park, but an awful lot of people don't know about it. And I just think, well, why would anybody walk on a road when they have the option of walking on a riverbank? And signage and redeveloping the river itself. And allowing things to grow so that it's a beautiful green corridor would actually really encourage people to go there, I think. There's also hardly any independence there. It's all just chains. So there's, you know, if you're looking for an interesting experience as opposed to just shopping, then there's not much there. And the best thing about it is the pool and the river. And it could have so much more going for it.
And like, wayfinding is one of the projects that Ben Webster's team are doing at the moment, I think. So, because I did write a little bit about that in the report as part of the improvement. So, yeah, that is the kind of thing, you know, if people are aware of better links and they're more likely to walk and cycle rather than go in their car. So, yeah. Need to consider.
Sorry, could I just come back on that issue of the Riverside Walk? Because just through the River Wensome Strategy work, that project, Joy, you were just referring to is a River Wensome Strategy Accessibility Improvement project that's currently underway. And part of that will be to address signage across the whole of the the River Wensome from New Mills out to the sort of Carrow Bridge sort of area. So there will be improvements there in due course, probably in the next year or so.
Oh, good, because there's plenty for him. Because like the Riverside Walk where it's wide near the station is great. It's very narrow under Carrow Bridge and needs some improvement there.
Yeah, I think that the main, there are some areas are being improved, but there's also the signage strategy alongside that. So the signage will be improved as well. And we'll be taking a report to Cabinet next month with a bit more information about projects and what's going on with the River Wensome Strategy in any case.
But it's interesting what you say about people wanting an experience. I think, you know, a retail park is a very different experience to the city experience. And it's sort of, yeah, it is very different. And I guess the question is, in my mind, particularly thinking about Longwater and people coming to Norwich and driving past Longwater to come into the city centre, why would they do that if, you know, they can get most of what they want there? Well, the reason they would do that is because actually all you can do at Longwater is you can shop, you can maybe have a pizza, but I mean, you can't have the experience you can have in the day out in Norwich. So you can't do a bit of shopping, you can't go and have a nice bit of lunch. Some in a nice independent in the lanes, you can't then go and see a show or a film or what do you might all see some sports and then go for a meal in the end, or maybe visit a museum, all the things that you can do if you spend a day in Norwich. And that's why they drive past, because we've got a diverse offer. And that's, whereas if all you want to do is kind of, you know, in and out, I'm just going to do my shopping and do some food shopping and go to next or wherever it might be in the range and then go home after an hour. That's what retail parks offer. So I guess it's not, it's kind of chalk and cheese, but it's just as well we have got the offer because otherwise we would be losing out to the retail parks, which of course is not something that we, we want to do. Any other questions or comments? No. Well, I think one of the things that come out of this, apart from thank you to the officers for all their really hard work and the excellent report, is that although we'd have liked the situation to be a lot better than it is, given the pandemic and given the trends in online shopping, which have been accelerated by the pandemic, and given how badly some other of our neighbours and other town centres around the country and city centres are faring, we do seem to have managed to navigate ourselves into a position where we do have vibrant areas, we've minimised the losses and we have still got more investment coming in. So it seems as though the strategies and the policies we've been pursuing have been successful and have protected the city from the situation, the dire situation many similar places have found themselves in. But we should never be complacent and we must work hard to protect the city centre and its vibrancy. And part of that is around looking at all the issues that have been discussed today to make sure it's diverse, that we keep that critical mass, that we keep that experience and that we work with partners in the retail sector and the bid and others to ensure that we do that. So thank you, everybody, for that. As I say, I feared that report. It could have been an awful lot worse than it was. And that's no cause to celebrate, but it is a cause to be grateful that we seem to have been following the right policies and strategies. So I think, instead of looking back at the agenda, we've now got the Article Four direction. So who's going to lead on this?
That's me again.
Thank you, Joy. You're busy today, aren't you?
Yes. And so we last discussed the Article Four Direction at our meeting on the 22nd of June. And members of this committee voted in favour of recommending to Cabinet that we proceed with the introduction of the Article Four Direction to remove permitted development rights for the conversion of offices to residential. So subsequently, a report went to Cabinet on the 7th of July and they agreed that we should proceed. So the direction was made on the 28th of July. And this started a six week consultation process. And we received 14 responses to the consultation and a summary of the responses can be found on pages 104 to 107 of this report. And as could be expected, the response was mixed with some people supporting it, some objecting and some commenting and suggesting ways that the Article Four Direction could be amended. So as officers, we carefully considered the responses. And whilst we understand that some people feel that there is a surplus of office space and that residential in some cases can be a good use for it, our response to this is that the council is not opposed to office to residential conversions per se. And the direction will not prevent all offices changing to residential. Instead, it will enable the council to manage it and to consider all material planning considerations, including the impact that the loss of specific offices will have on our economy, as well as ensuring that housing is of good quality. So we do feel that we've got a strong evidence base. And therefore, the officer's view is that we should proceed to confirm the direction so that it can be brought into force in July next year. It's not possible to bring it into force any earlier due to the need to give 12 months' notice to avoid compensation claims. And there is unfortunately still some uncertainty, however. And so we notified the Secretary of State back in July that we had made the direction, but we're still awaiting their response. So they are currently considering whether the direction fulfils national policy and whether there is cause for the Secretary of State to use his powers of intervention. And they have, however, confirmed that their consideration should not stop the Article Four Direction process. So therefore, to prevent any delays, the recommendation is to take a paper to Cabinet in December suggesting that we proceed and confirm the direction whilst we await the outcome of the Secretary of State's decision. So if the Secretary of State did come back and say that they want to intervene, then we'd have to consider our options and bring a paper back to this committee and then to Cabinet. But I think at the moment, the recommendation is that we should carry on and should proceed.
Thank you, Joy. Very clear. And, you know, this touches on things we've been discussing about a bit, a concern about the loss of office space and also about the quality of accommodation that's being built. And I guess also our ability as planners to manage the uses in the city so that we can as we have up till now, manage them so that we have the right mix to ensure the vibrancy and the economic wellbeing of the city, rather than just leaving it to the market. So anybody want to come in and ask any questions or comments? No. Are we all in agreement that we should proceed with the Article Direction? I think we are. Yeah. No, no one wants to get in the way of it. Let's just do it. Yeah. Absolutely. Go on, Lesley.
It's all right. I don't want to get in the way of it. I support this. It just declared to me as we were moving on to this item that we haven't made any recommendations about either of the other two. So I wanted to open a space in case we want to come back to that. But I'm very happy to support the Article Four Direction.
So I think in terms of the, yeah, I mean, what we're looking here to do is to agree whether or not we're supporting it before it goes back to Cabinet to consider. That's right, isn't it, Joy?
Yeah.
So we can make comments if we wish. And I think our comment would be that we support it. I think I'm not jumping the gun. I don't see anybody against it. I think, yeah, we've discussed it over and over again and it chimes with so many other discussions we've had. And there is a very common theme. So are we all in favour of recommending to Cabinet that we proceed with the Article Four Direction? Brilliant. Excellent. Thank you, everybody. So in terms of the retail monitor, let's go back to that then. So I'll look to you, Jackie. So are we in a position to make recommendations to Cabinet around that?
We're not taking the retail monitor to Cabinet at the moment because there's no decisions being made. It's just really something to note the findings at the moment. And then just to get my recommendation page up, it's to note the findings, but then also it was to kind of start thinking about discussions around how frequently we monitor and whether we should be increasing that. And I think the decision was that, you know, that would be a good, good thing to kind of to monitor more frequently so we know more what the situation is. And then it's also kind of in terms of just considering how this, how, what the direction of travel is likely to be. So when we do come to review our DM policies, and we've kind of got the information there and we've, you know, started to consider about how things could change. So yeah, it's not really, there's nothing really in terms of a decision for Cabinet at this stage.
And I think we all do agree that six monthly monitoring reports would be helpful rather than sitting back and letting a year pass and then seeing what happened. Because things can change very quickly. They have changed very quickly because of the pandemic and we're still not quite sure how the dust is going to settle. So so I think for the time being, we're agreeing with that. And I think we're also agreeing to carry on the work as we were. Is that fair, everybody? Great. Okay, good. So the next meeting, we've got the date of the next meeting. Do we have a date for the next meeting, Jackie?
We're currently meeting every two months. So you've had a meeting in November, which is the normal meeting. And I think the next one will be January.
Okay, yeah, brilliant. Okay. So we'll be into 2022 by then. Okay, thank you very much, everybody. Had a good discussion, had lots of good issues and see you soon.
Thank you.
I suppose I should say that's the end of the meeting.